All right, it is 7:11 PM on Wednesday, January 15, 2025. We apologize, we're starting a few minutes late. This meeting is being, I should clarify, this is the Tuilla City Council and the Tuilla City Redevelopment Agency. Since we're choosing board positions, we're doing both meetings. This meeting is being broadcast at Tuilla City Hall in the council chambers, and it's also being broadcast on the Tuilla City YouTube channel. Our first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please rise and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to our second item, which is a roll call. Councilwoman Manzio.
Present.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Present.
Councilman Hanson.
Present.
Councilman McCall.
Present.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I'm also present. Item three is the public comment period. This is the time for the public to address the council. We ask that you state your name into the microphone. You keep your comments to three minutes or less, and then you sign the paper over by Loretta. The time is now the Publix.
Becky Harvey, and I want to talk about the Spanish point and homelessness. I understand, appreciate, and respect what that program is for, what that is needed for. However, the increase in theft, car theft, burglaries, drugs, from 400 north to 700 north has tripled. Streetlights, I've requested streetlights five years at least, not one has been replaced. So, patrolling, I don't know what Board Chief Day can do, but something has to be done because that overflow is going out into our community. So, I've watched UTA drop off homeless, I don't know from what city, I witnessed it. So, that was my concern. I think it needs to be addressed a little more in depth. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Pull on his desk.
Seeing no one else come forward, I will close the public comment period, and we'll move on to item four, which is the selection of city council and redevelopment agency chair and vice chair positions for 2025. So, we discussed this quickly in our work meeting. Is there someone who would like to make a motion, or do we feel like we need more discussion on this?
I don't think we need more.
Okay. If someone wants to make a motion, then we can start with...
I'll make a motion to nominate Justin Brady as chair and Melody Goachis as vice chair of the city council.
Second.
Oh, sorry. I was, okay, so we'll vote on that one, and then we'll vote on the RDA, I'm assuming. So, I don't know if there was more to add to that. Okay, so we have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio, and a second from Councilman McCall. Is that correct? Okay, we'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman McCall.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I also vote aye. That passes 5-0. And then the RDA position as well. And I think the consensus was that we would leave that as is, so.
Do you need somebody to make a motion?
Yeah.
Make a motion, we reinstate the ones that are there. Marissa Manzio is chair, and Dave McCall is vice chair of the RDA.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Hanson, and a second from Councilwoman Goachis. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I also vote aye. That passes 5-0. Okay, and then we came to an agreement that we would keep our current boards that we have. Okay.
Can we, I mean, when you go to COG, I'm happy to do the WFRC one, but if somebody else is interested, then?
Yeah, we do that tomorrow.
Okay, we'll do that. We'll let you know.
Okay, and I think we've all been, we've worked really well together. If we can't attend something, we reach out to someone else, and so any of us are able to attend other meetings as well, so.
Very important to state that, thank you.
Okay, our next item is the Technical College. Okay, we're waiting, okay. I just wanted to make sure. No, that's okay. So, we are going to move that, just let us know, wave at me when it's ready, and then we'll do that presentation. We're going to move on to item six. That's a second quarter economic development update. This will be presented by John Perez, the Economic Development Director.
Good evening, if you want to go ahead and start it for me. Next slide. So, just some kind of business attraction and expansion, as the mayor mentioned, in this second quarter, we had the Chipotle grand opening at Founder's Point, and then Mumbai House, and then Rome Italian Restaurant, and then also, like she mentioned as well, Alicia's, not Alicia's, Panaderia, right here on Main Street. And the next slide. These are, this is an update from Q1 to Q2 of the vacancy rates, and you'll see green, which is all good. Retail is down to just 1.7% vacancy rate. Office is stayed at 0%. Industrial is at 13.3%. And then that hospitality, which is really technically the hotels' occupancy rates, staying in the healthy range above 60%, so that's good. And I think too, you know, when you look, we had a meeting today, and somebody was kind of saying, you know, "I'm really not so sure what economic development is." And I said, "Well, you have to know what the region stands at." And when you see, you know, retail percentage that low, that tells you we can kind of ease up on some of the incentives or things we have to offer for those retailers, but we still have it relatively untapped when it comes to that 13% for the industrial. So, that tells you where, you know, we can really focus our efforts on. Next slide. And then this is a lead generating pipeline. This just goes over kind of anonymous and undisclosed contacts made, so four in the restaurant department, four retail hospitality. Only three RFIs were responded to, and then one RFI visit. And you might say, "Why only three RFIs?" That's not that we didn't respond to far less, it's just that EDC Utah did not send out as many in quarter two. We actually responded to everything that was sent out in quarter two, but there were only three to respond to. And then this one, the RDA slide, this is just kind of confirmed leases, and then also with that recent opening of Chipotle, but Wingstop, Chili's, Hobby Lobby, Ulta Beauty, Five Below, TJ Maxx, and then Sierra Trading Post. And I heard Councilmember Hanson kind of talk about further updates on the RDA going forward, so, you know, I'll be happy to, you know, talk with Councilwoman Manzio, and the mayor, and Councilmember McCall to include, you know, more perhaps on this. But, you know, while it's not on this quarterly update, if you look at previous quarter updates, just know those ongoing kind of infrastructure improvements at Peterson Industrial Depot, we're very regularly in contact with them, and, you know, always looking at different invoices they send through to work on those reimbursement processes. So, everybody is very involved, it is a team effort.
And I think part of it, sorry, my mic's off again. Part of it is I just want to know kind of what's happening.
Right.
Not just the data of how we're improving, not just the quarter's data, but kind of more specific of what's happening there. Just so we're aware.
Right.
As we communicate with our citizens, we have more information for them. So, thank you.
And then this next one is just kind of goes a little bit further into the RFI. So, like I said, we submitted three. We're still in evaluation for a couple. One that was submitted back in Q1 of FY25, and then we're still in that third stage of an evaluation. That was the one visit that was in November. Still no update on that. Hopefully, we'll hear something in this new calendar year. And then continuing with EDC Utah, we finally have a community profile. So, that's just the first page of it, and if you'd like to see it, it has been posted. If you go onto the Tuilla City website, it's under the economic development page, and if you ask the mayor, she'll say she doesn't think we've ever had a community profile with EDC Utah. So, we finally have one, and it is good. We reviewed it very well, and it is very up to date. And then also, in November, was the Economics 2024 Convention, and that was hosted this year in Salt Lake City, so I was able to attend that. And then there was also an EDC Utah Economics Combined Site Selectors Guild Site Selection Dinner, which was supposed to have 12 site selectors, they only ended up having six. But nonetheless, you know, it was good to make those contacts, and, you know, people in the south, people in the Midwest, and, you know, really talking to them about Tuilla and kind of the unique opportunities that we have in the state, and why we're such a great opportunity for different businesses to locate and expand to. And then just submitted one, RFI to GOEO, and there's no update. And then just to kind of give an update on the Broadway property, if you saw in quarter two, we had that temporary fence installed along the eastern property, the former Broadway Heritage Apartments property, and there's a fence with kind of a canvas, a black canvas, so you can't see through, and that's kind of the hopes of that. And that was in the idea that, and we were going to be applying for a certain grant, however, we're reevaluating that. And then we have a meeting next week with the state's Brownfield Group to kind of get updates on both of those properties, to see where we at, see where we are at with the findings, and what further action will be taken.
May I just make one comment on that update? And I should have told you ahead of time, I mean, John already knows this, but, because it happened yesterday. The EPA has finally submitted the paperwork to the county recorder to take the lien off the property. It should just take them time to get through that process, but the paperwork has all been filed and done. The final payment of the $30,000 to the EPA was made today. So, we're moving forward.
And then just to give you an update on the Tuilla City Historic Main Street Commission meeting, our first meeting occurred in the second quarter, and then the way finding signs finally arrived, very long process to get those. Unfortunately, there were some issues with the pole that we ordered them with, so I'm working with Jamie and his team to get better poles and better anchors, so we can finally get those five signs up in the Main Street corridor area. And then this is a social media synopsis over the past quarter, and if you look at the Facebook page, look at that, 603.5% increase in reach, almost 300% increase in content interactions. The Instagram page also, almost 13% increase in reach, just over 8% increase in content interactions. The LinkedIn page, 55% increase in reactions and almost 14% increase in impressions. So, that's really great. I think if you kind of look at the Facebook page, a lot of that can kind of be attributed to a lot of the holiday events that occurred, and that can probably be attributed to the increase. And then with the LinkedIn, we've had, you know, a few more ribbon cuttings and kind of economic development news that's kind of LinkedIn-worthy, so that's very exciting. And then, I don't know why the text is smaller, but on this one, this is just kind of an update on the strategic plan, the update. We had a survey that was posted on the city's social media channels. It closes today, and the last I checked last week, it was over 300 responses, so I'll check tomorrow and see what we closed out at, but really good turnout, so that will be analyzed and kind of looking at some of the different ways, and then I'll share it with our stakeholder engagement team that reviews everything that comes in, and then hopefully, you know, we can try to see how we can incorporate that into the updated implementation plan. And then, any questions or suggestions from the council? And Ed, excuse me, Councilmember Hanson, I heard you with the RDA stuff. Anything else?
I don't have any other questions or comments. Oh, go ahead, Melody.
I have a question. You know, with the new economic development plan, you know, not everybody is tech savvy and LinkedIn and all of that. Last time we did a general plan, we invited the public for an open house.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's still in the works, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I think it's important to just state that the RDA and economic development, although they work together, are separate things. So, you know, John is economic development director, does a lot of things. RDA is really supposed to be more focused on economic development within the RDA areas and the plans that we have, so sometimes we all get that a little mixed up, but just keep, remind us to keep that a little bit separate.
Okay, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Good job, John.
We're going to move on to item seven, which is ordinance 2025-01, an ordinance of Tuilla City updating the city fire code by amending Tuilla City Code Title III, Chapter III, and repealing Tuilla City Code Title III, Chapter IV. This is presented by Matt Johnson, the Assistant City Attorney.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, council members. This ordinance, we're looking again at the fire code. If you recall, back in November, this council passed an ordinance that amended Chapter I and repealed Chapter II. So, this probably sounds familiar now, we're asking to amend Chapter III and repeal Chapter IV. Chapter III, the bulk of it has to do with Tuilla City adopting the International Fire Code, which is fire prevention, fire safety. We worked with the fire department, and especially Chief McCoy and Fire Marshal Wall did a lot of legwork to compare the International Fire Code. You'll see, Chapter III has a lot of red lines, because we took out everything that was redundant in, with the International Fire Code. What it did leave is, it left up to local governments how to address penalties for people who violate actions taken under the International Fire Code. So, we did put that in, that it'll be a Class E misdemeanor. And, but basically, we put in what we needed to, and we've taken out everything that's redundant. And then with the Chapter IV, that has to do with fireworks, which the state has occupied the field, so it's been preempted. Anything we have in our fireworks code would either be redundant or would be contrary to the state codes, so we're just recommending repealing that.
Any questions or comments?
Shorter code is always better.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just say it's easier reading, because it's like a third of what it was, or even less, I think, so, yeah. It's great.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we approve ordinance 2025-01, an ordinance of the Tuilla City updating the city fire code by amending Tuilla City Code Title III, Chapter III, and repealing Tuilla City Code Title III, Chapter IV.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Hanson, and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I also vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item eight is ordinance 2025-02, an ordinance of the Tuilla City Council amending Tuilla City Code Chapter VI-VB regarding aggressive animals. This will be presented by Adrian Day, the chief of police.
Thank you, council. This is, these amendments have been brought to you because of citizens bringing concerns to me about aggressive dogs and what we can do to improve, which is rare, because we have so many hearings, we usually get complaints we're too aggressive. But, a certain citizen has come to two of you, because he's tired of specifically huskies and coyotes coming onto his property and going after his farm animals. A big question of his is when he could defend his property. Fresh on my mind is May 2018, we had a husky loose one night, and he killed just under 30 animals while he was loose that night. We hit the news on that one, and we had 105 dog bites this year, and one cat bite. Two improvements in front of you. I believe our improvements is wording to change attacking animal in our code. It mirrors the state code, makes it clearer in my eyes from apparent attitude of attack to chases, worries, or threatens. I think it makes it clear, dog owners don't always see an attack when their dog is going after someone. This makes it chases or worries, and that mirrors the state. The second is adding the authority to capture and owner responsibility, the liabilities on them for any injury or damage. The authority to capture includes a person may kill, capture, or injure an attacking animal, which, with that attacking definition, and that's even in pursuit. And that is, that is state, it's just putting it on our code. I think it makes it clear for our citizen when they can take that action, and they can capture coyotes and capture dogs, or put them down if they need to. Another thing I looked into was our hearing process. We're a little unique in that we do that. I don't, I don't see it anywhere else, I couldn't find one. I do like the process of a hearing officer determining the disposition of a dog, especially, it's mostly dog. When we're going through 106 a year, most petition the court, go for a court order to get a disposition of the attacking animal, and that can take a lot of time, and we don't have the space to keep that many for that long. So, I like that process. So, these are the changes we're recommending, and I can take any questions you have.
Any questions or comments from the council?
I know I was in discussion with chief about this a few times, and it looks good to me. I appreciate the changes. I put more teeth in the ordinance, so you can actually do something, rather than just what we've been doing with it the last while, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to say thanks for addressing the concern, and I did invite one of the people that had contacted me about this, and let them know that this ordinance would be on our agenda, so he was aware. I must be unable to attend.
Last month, we put down two huskies that killed 12 chickens. The owner refused to come to the hearing, and didn't even show up to try to claim his dogs, so we went forward with that one.
Okay.
So, I think we're in the right direction.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve ordinance 2025-02, an ordinance of the Tuilla City Council amending Tuilla City Code Chapter VI-VB regarding aggressive animals.
And I'll second.
With a motion from Councilwoman Manzio, and a second from Councilwoman Goachis, we'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman McCall.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I also vote aye. That passes 5-0. Thanks, chief. We're going to go back to item five, to the Tuilla Technical College Student of the Year, and also an annual update. This is presented by President Paul Hacking.
Thank you, council members and Madam Mayor. It's an honor to be with you tonight. I appreciate your patience. It's great to work in a technical college and always have technical difficulties. I don't know why that is, it seems to be ironic, but it's an honor to be with you tonight and present and share with you our story of our student of the year. First of all, I'd like to thank those members who are able to make it to our student of the year banquet. It's always a special night, and I know you are all very busy, and you're not able to come to everything, but when you're able to come, it sure helps to put faces on to what we're trying to do. Again, I can present numbers all day long here, and it's not until you see the faces of the real people. And even tonight, our student of the year represents 1,200 other students that all have their individual stories, and we meet students where they are. We try to do our best to remove barriers that keep them from succeeding, and help them to attain the skills they need to further their economic goals and their workforce goals. Before I get to the dessert of tonight, I want to thank you for your tremendous support of our school. We would not be here if it weren't for Tuilla City, certainly not in the fashion we are. I truly believe if you didn't step forward to help us get a physical building, that it would have been very difficult for us to remain long in rented facilities and have the gravitas we needed to become what we have become. And because we're able to grow and fill the building that you helped us get, as you know, three years ago, we were able to get legislative funding, and then last year, we got an additional $2.5 million to help double the size of our programmatic space in our building. We're so thrilled that it hasn't gone perfect, no construction project has. We've had problems with our boiler speaking to our controls, and so we've had a lot of cold students for many months in the new part of the building, but we're getting that under control. And Phase III and IV and V, which includes a separate metal building that we're turning into a building trades building, that will also hold room for composites and our CDL program, a backing range there, as well as where we hope to start plumbing apprentice in the near future, and at some point, a building trades program that would be primarily high school students but would have opportunities for adults. Also, we'll host our electrical apprentice program in that back room. Then our diesel lab will be done here in a few months, and it will triple the amount of space we have for diesel mechanics. At that time, we hope to start a beginning automotive program. Grantsville does not have automotive, nor does the new high schools, so we hope to help provide those opportunities for high school students, and then also adults on basic ASE automotive training. All this is culminating to a ribbon cutting ceremony that we hope to have on the third Friday of March. We're waiting for the governor to return to his scheduler. He wants to speak at a ribbon cutting, but he's having an out-of-country travels around that same time, so he's trying to move some things around, so we haven't finalized that date. As soon as we do finalize that date, we'll be sure to get a save the date card out. I promise, if you're able to come, you will walk away that day with a gratitude that you attended. We're going to make it a very special event. We're going to have elected officials and donors luncheon at 12 to 1, and recognize those that have given $10,000 or more to the building, and then we will go to a public ribbon cutting ceremony in the diesel lab that will be incredibly special. So, just keep that on your radar, and we'll let you know for sure when we have the date. We also are excited for graduation, and I know, again, it's not easy. You're invited to a lot of great things. But this year, we will have the speaker of the house as our keynote speaker at graduation. It'll be great to have Speaker Schultz in Tuilla and feel connected to our institution. It's going to be an interesting legislative session. The legislature has said that they are going to do a lot of work to reform higher education this year, including reallocating 10% of budgets to programs that add more to the economic well-being of the state. Although we often get painted with a broad brush, if you've read in those stories in the Tribune, luckily, fortunately, they've never intended the technical colleges to be part of that, so thank goodness. And actually, yesterday, the majority leader of the House sent out the majority public parties legislative priorities and technical education, increasing funding to technical education, both in the CTE programs of the school district and in the technical colleges, was high on their list. We are hearing there isn't a lot of new funding this year, but if they find funding and new funding goes to higher education, I'd much rather be at technical college this year than a degree-granting institution, which has not always been the case, so we're hoping. Last year was not a great year, but as you know, we have room in our new building for a new surge tech program, for automotive, machining, plumbing, and a few other programs, including expanding welding and expanding diesel mechanics. And so, obviously, we can't do any of those things without additional funding, so we're hoping. We know it won't happen overnight, but over the years, we will be adding more programs and expanding our current programs. During construction, we've had to cap several programs, which has been challenging and has frustrated several students who want to get into our programs, and yet, as we're, we've already, don't have enough space in diesel mechanics, for example, and as we're remodeling the classrooms, we've had to shrink the size to a third of our already small space for a few months, but as soon as, you know, we can see the end of the road, and as soon as we open it up, it's going to be great. Anyway, I'm excited about those things. And then, I'm very grateful for Chief Day and the other law enforcement officers in our community, with your support and with your encouragement. Four or five years ago, we started a police academy. We've had low enrollment, but every year, it grows a little bit. We're just getting ready to start our fifth year, and I hate to say numbers, but it looks like we have 15 confirmed students, which is the biggest class we've ever had, and for the second half, it looks like we'll have around 20 to 24 for the Leo, which is just great progress. I mean, we really wondered at the first couple of years if we were going to make it, and through the work of a lot of our, a lot of people, including your law enforcement community and your HR department, we've made a lot of progress there, and we're excited about it. If we do get funding at the legislature this year, the first new program we'll be adding is machining, the depot, a lot of businesses, Detroit Diesel. adding is machining. The depot, a lot of businesses, Detroit Diesel has asked us to add a machining program, and we think it's going to be very successful. We've also been, just recently started a standalone barbering program. We've always had barbering, but it was embedded in cosmetology, and they didn't really get the attention they needed. We've now been able to hire a dedicated barbering instructor, and it's, we'll be teaching it in open entry format, so students can enroll, adult students about any time. And hopefully, you can help us get the word out on that. I do want to thank you and give you a brief update for, I've been working with the mayor on a possibility of purchasing a piece of land behind our property. As you know, after we get this building expansion done, there is, we don't own any property contiguous to the college outside of the driving range, which we really don't want to give up, where our community can build in the future. Now, it's crazy to think about building in the future when we're just opening a new building, but if we don't look forward, we're going to miss opportunities. And so in the summer, the property owner wanted to do it quite rapidly, and I, of course, needed to go to the legislature. I got approval from UCI. I got approval from the governor. It's in the governor's budget to purchase this piece of property, but just today, unfortunately, the landowner decided he didn't want to sell it separate from the building. So I just wanted, as community leaders, I wanted you to be aware of that. It's very disappointing, because someday, we will need that. Granted, it's 15, 20 years in the future, but then, last time I checked, they're not making new land. And so if you ever are in positions to help us in that situation, I certainly would, if they sell it to someone who might be willing to sell it, we still would be interested. We'd have to start the process all over to get the funding, but because we're needed that badly, I'm very, very confident we could get the legislative funding for the land, not the building, of course. To get another building, I got to fully utilize my current building. Anyway, and with that, I wanted to show a special video, and I'm sorry it took a while to get, but when I first became president seven years ago, I had some concerns about our branding and our logo that identifies us in the community. And the reason I had concerns is because, as compared to other logos of the 16 institutions of higher learning in the state, it really didn't pop out. It kind of fades in the background. Also, the logo of the Three Mountain Peaks is very similar to Tuilla Cities. It's very, very similar to the school districts, and we really want to differentiate ourselves, and at a distance, we want people to be able to identify that that's a billboard from the technical college, not the school district. And I've really dragged my feet on it, because it's a huge lift. A lot of people have emotional feelings invested in our logo, because we spent a lot of money promoting our logo and getting that out there, and people recognize it from it. But we were getting ready to put naming on the building and spending a lot of money to name different places of our building with our college name. And so it became very clear that if we were going to do it, now was the right time to do it. So we bit the bullet and developed a school, college-wide committee that spent about five months researching over 250 different logos and variations of the logos. And we finally arrived at a decision that I shared with the board today, and I'm proud to share it with you. I hope, I will say that even when I saw it for the first time, I was a little shocked, because it's pretty vivid and pretty bright, but the more I've lived with it, the more I've loved it, and I'm really, really believe it will help differentiate ourselves. And I hope soon you'll be, agree with me as well, that it really represents what we're trying to do at the college. So without further ado, would you please play that video?
Today is a turning point for Tuilla Technical College, the day we embrace bold change and step confidently into the future. Our logo, the visual heartbeat of who we are, is evolving, just as we've grown to better serve our students, our community, and our mission.
Let's talk about the current logo. It's done its job, but let's be honest, it blends in too much. Its thin lines and subdued style don't match the dynamic, hands-on energy that defines Tuilla Tech. We don't just blend in, we stand out. And we need a logo that stands out with us, one that screams strength, innovation, and unstoppable momentum.
Enter our new logo, a powerful design that redefines what it means to represent Tuilla Tech. This is not just a fresh look, it's a rallying cry. Let me tell you why. The arrowhead shape, a symbol of focus, strength, and direction. An arrowhead doesn't meander, it breaks through. It's sharp and precise, just like the technical training we provide. This is a logo that says, "We are on target."
The upward point. This is pure aspiration. It's growth. It's the journey every student takes when they walk through our doors. It's about rising above, reaching for the summit, and grabbing hold of opportunities they once thought were out of reach.
The mountain ridge profile, a nod to our breathtaking Utah roots. Yes, but it's also a reminder that challenges are meant to be climbed. Just as our students conquer obstacles on their educational paths, this logo represents their resilience and strength.
And then there's a spark, the lightning bolt. The jolt of energy, innovation, and empowerment Tuilla Tech is known for. This is hands-on training that ignites confidence. The cutting-edge tech that prepares students for the real world, and the transformation that happens when potential is unleashed.
This logo is not just a mark. It's a movement. It's bold, modern, unapologetically strong, just like Tuilla Tech. It represents affordable, flexible, and achievable education, and the countless lives we've helped transform. It captures our essence, focused, innovative, and ready to shatter expectations.
We're not just changing a design, we're making a statement. Tuilla Tech is here, stronger than ever, shaping futures, breaking barriers, and creating unstoppable momentum. So let's celebrate this moment, this logo, this symbol of what we stand for. Together, we'll keep aiming higher, breaking through, and proving every day that you can do it too.
Thank you. I hope with time, our whole community will become more familiar with that and come to celebrate what the meaning of the story behind what we are attempting to do here. And speaking of dessert and what we're attempting to do here, it's my honor now to introduce our Student of the Year, Lorenzo DeGraffin-Reed. Lorenzo has a great story. Again, he represents 1,200 other students that also have great stories. And as you hear his stories, I hope you'll think not only of his story, but of all of our students that we're attempting to meet them where they are and help them succeed. After Lorenzo finishes, I will step up with Lorenzo and be happy to take any questions from you all.
Good evening. I'll start with, "Nothing beats a failure but a try," a quote by R.J. Smith. And this quote was taught to me by my family and always helps me to put things in perspective when I face challenges. Again, my name is Lorenzo DeGraffin-Reed, and this is my story. Growing up in North Carolina, I was extremely interested in computers and often felt a bit inadequate while working on them. I tinkered around with them for hours, but I drifted away from them and from that passion as I transitioned into adulthood. In my late twenties, I began working in different fields of work, and while doing so, I rediscovered my love for coding and did it as a side hobby. I questioned, could I turn this into a career? Now with a beautiful wife, four kids, and a home, I took the plunge. I began teaching myself to code and building websites after long days of work. My career flourished, and I advanced to management without any formal degree, as the company I worked for valued my hands-on experience. While there, I continued to pour out my efforts into the work and then began coding again at night, but unfortunately, it took a backseat. Fast forward 10 years, after many successes, I faced a setback. I was unexpectedly let go as I was preparing for a family trip and also undergoing an extensive foot surgery that would confine me to my home for months. My heart sank knowing I wouldn't be able to work for a long time, and I shared the news with my wife and children. They all rallied together and were ready to help. My oldest daughter offered to get a job, and my youngest son said he would sell his action figures to contribute. We reassured them we could manage. During my recovery, I struggled with feelings of depression and uncertainty about my future, and one day, my wife said, "Now, honey, you get to figure out what you want to be when you grow up." And then she suggested I return to school for software development. This has always been my passion, and with her support, I began researching online for a school, for an online program. I then discovered Tuilla Technical College nearby, and I could learn coding in person. Despite my fears about supporting my family, my wife encouraged me. Nothing beats a failure but a try. And with her blessing, I began classes in December of 2023. My passion for software development began to reignite. Thankfully, Tuilla Technical College accommodated my schedule, allowing me to work nights while attending school during the day. I didn't have to wait months for the next semester to start, because with Tuilla Tech's open, excuse me, with Tuilla Tech's open entry program, it allowed me to begin pursuing my dream immediately. My days were long, starting at 7:00 a.m. and ending at midnight, but I was happy to be moving forward. Each night, when I returned home to my family, who were all sleeping, minus my eight-year-old son, he'd wait up for me often, and then he would help me take off my work vest and my shoes, and then he'd help guide me upstairs. My beautiful wife managed a full-time job, sports, and all of our children. The routine continued, and I was content. With the support of my family in Tuilla Tech, I achieved what I once thought was an impossible dream. My passion for software development transformed from a hobby into a viable career. The future remains to be determined as I prepare to graduate and enter into the industry. However, I know that with the backing of my family and with the support of Tuilla Tech, many possibilities do lie ahead, because nothing beats a failure but a try. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you so much for listening to us and letting us share so many things with you tonight. Do you have any questions for us?
What part of North Carolina?
Chapel Hill, North Carolina.
Okay.
Homegrown.
Done.
Yes. I'm living in Tuilla now.
Living in Tuilla, yes.
Anyway, thank you so much for your support. It truly, I know, I truly believe in the puzzle piece metaphor, that it takes a bunch of us playing different roles in a community to build all the infrastructure and the systems and the support mechanisms to have a great community. And there are so many communities, much larger than Tuilla, that do not have what we have, not by accident. It's leaders, as yourselves, with the foresight to see the future and to sacrifice and put in the work to have the things that we have. And I'm grateful for the decisions you've all made and those that came before you, so that we could change the lives that we do at Tuilla Tech every day. I have the best job in the state of Utah, and I know I stand on the shoulders of great people that made this possible. Thank you all. Appreciate you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Hacking and Lorenzo. That was great. We'll move on to our next item, which is item nine, a resolution 2025-01, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council amending the Tuilla City fee schedule for parks and recreation building, community room use fees. This is presented by Darwin Cook, the Parks and Recreation Director.
Good evening, council. As stated in our code, our city code, Tuilla City Council establishes the fees by resolution and activities regulated by the city. And as you know, we recently completed our Parks and Recreation Cemetery and Community Building by the cemetery. And as we were getting ready with the completion, we realized that we didn't bring the fees to you for those community rooms that have been finished. So I just brought some pictures for you, and already you can kind of just slowly kind of scan through those. This is more so the community can see that this is, this is the rooms that we're talking about. There's a smaller one and a larger one. So as we, as staff was looking through the fees that we charge at some of our other locations, we felt that we could kind of find a medium ground between our community center that we currently rent out and the Dow James, that they kind of have the similar, similar type use demand and request, and so we kind of tried to keep the fees similar to those. Both of the facilities have a little warming kitchen, and then we have tables and chairs there and fridge, obviously. They do have their independent entry from the rest of the building, code entry, that we can just issue a code as the renters request the use of it. And the reservation of these is all online, so they can reserve and pay online, and then a code sent to them via email to allow them into the particular use that they're going to use. We recommend, what we're bringing before you today to recommend is, as I stated, there is a small and a large room. Our hourly fee that we are recommending, the small room would be 20, the large room would be 30. If they were going to use both, it would be 50, with both rooms having a max fee, the small room being 150 per the day and large room 200, and then both would be 350. As most of our other facilities have, we have a nonprofit hourly fee. The small room would be 10, the large room would be 15, with a combined of 25 per hour. And then the maximum day nonprofit fee would be 60 for the small, 150 for the large, and 210 combined. And then as most of our rental facilities, we do have a damage fee that we charge, which is $50 per rent, rental. If there's no damage or anything, we return that to the patron. Any, oh, I'd like to also mention that this part of the building, the upper part of the building, because we're using them as community rooms, this is one of our Par Tax projects that, this project was a three-year project, and in each of the budgets, you guys approved, you guys are the Par Tax Board, and so you approved the, approved the Par Tax for use of this part of the building. So the upper floor was a Par Tax project and funded by the Par Tax. So, any questions?
Any questions or comments?
It's an awesome building.
It is an awesome building. I had just one question on the damage deposit. Is that just a $50 deposit? But if they created more damage than $50, do you go back and
We would, yeah.
Charge the actual cost?
Yeah, they would be responsible for the total amount that they damaged. This is more just to cover like scratches and other things, incidentaries that were broken at the time for the rental, but no severe damage, they'd obviously, the claim would be done against them for the damage that they caused. And we do have, just, you know, so we know what was caused by who. We do have cameras installed so that we can see when the damage took place and who caused the damage, so.
Okay. It's a great building, and hopefully gets used a lot.
It's, we've, we've had four users in it already, and I think we have, I think four or five rentals already requested for it, so. We've had an after funeral luncheon there that was very successful. They did a great job doing their layout for how they did it, and it looked fantastic, so.
Great. All right, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-01, a resolution of Tuilla City Council amending the Tuilla City fee schedule for parks and recreation building, community room use fee.
I'll second.
With a motion from Councilman McCall and a second from Councilwoman Manzio, we'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall.
Aye.
Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio.
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes 5-0. Item 10 is Resolution 2025-02, a resolution of the Tuilla City Council amending the Tuilla City fee schedule for the Pratt Aquatic Center, presented by Darwin Cook.
Counsel, as I stated before, this is just a fee that you guys are responsible for setting. So a little history on this. So as many of you may know, at our Pratt Aquatic Center, we do have a party room, and then we have a balcony. We rent both of those out for parties about a year ago, and they are very popular and they get used a lot. Sometimes we cannot meet the demand for those, for the number of parties that want to take place at the pool, because they want to have a pool birthday party. So what was ending up happening was people were becoming very creative, and so they recognized that because we have a bleachers area upstairs as well, and there is about seven, six, seven feet of flat space in front of the bleachers, that there were impromptu parties being set up there, because the other two rooms were already being used. Well, what that lent to is that people were realizing that, oh, I don't need to schedule anything, because I can just go and set up up there. So in a, in a way to kind of, one, make sure that we're kind of getting schedules of people, not just assuming that they can use that when there may be other uses going on for that, for spectators or whatever have you. We initiated this fee so that, one, we could still maintain the rental on the party rooms and the balconies versus people, oh, you don't have to rent the balcony, you can just go, or, sorry, not, yeah, the balcony, you can just go use the bleachers area. So this is just for a two-hour use, just because most of the time, that's all we allow the parties to take place for, so that other people can the parties to take place for, so that other people can use them. And so, what we're presenting, what we have been using, as I stated, we need to get this before the city council, the city council can approve it, is a forty dollars for a two-hour session, which is equivalent to what we're charging for our other party areas, so. Doesn't get used as much, but it does, there's sometimes, all three will be booked, and so we just, you know, if you have two parties going on, that they had to pay for their party room, but the bleachers didn't, so we, so we just decided this is the way that the staff kind of fixed the problem down at the pool, so.
All right, are there any questions or comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-01, a resolution of the Tuula City Council amending the Tuula City fee schedule for parks and, oh, I gave the wrong one, Resolution 2022-02, a resolution of Tuula City Council amending Tuula City fee schedule for the Pratt Aquatic Center. Thank you.
I'll second. We have a motion from Councilwoman Gouches and a second from Councilman Hanson. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gouches?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I also vote aye. That passes five-zero. Item Eleven is an Arbor Day proclamation presented by Darwin Cook.
Thank you, Council. So, as many of you know, Justin and I love planting trees, and we have received our Tree USA designation for the last two years. Our current application is under review. Each year, part of that application is, is that we actually have to have a Tuula City Arbor Day proclamation. In the times, the two times prior, we've actually just issued the proclamation, but we felt it was appropriate to actually bring the proclamation before you, so that, one, we could get it on the record, and then, two, this becomes our proclamation for 2025. So, the one that we're going to read into the record today is actually the proclamation for 2025, because our 2024 is already completed. I probably should have Matt come read this, because his legalese is probably better than mine. But we wanted to read this into the record, so that we have our official proclamation, which then the mayor will sign. So, our official proclamation is, "Whereas in eighteen-seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agricultural established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution for combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting, heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of businesses, business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Mayor Debbie Nguyen, or Debbie Nguyen, Mayor of the City of Tuula, do hereby proclaim April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five as Arbor Day in the City of Tuula, Utah. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations, dated this fifteenth day of January, twenty-twenty-five." So, this is our proclamation for Arbor Day. Arbor Day does actually fall on the last Friday of April. However, our tree board has decided that Tuula City will celebrate Arbor Day on May sixteenth, and we will have an event on that day at Glen Eagles Park, and we will be doing a tree planting activity, or tree planting celebration, and that will also be the time where we actually give away our trees for the fall, so, or spring, sorry, for the spring. So, we have six different species of trees that we're bringing in, and those who come and participate in the Arbor Day celebration will be able to leave with a tree, as long as they meet the city requirements for that, and we'll also have some other booths there, we'll have some information on planting, but they'll also get a great demonstration of planting a tree, so.
How many trees are we planting?
Well, on that day, we are going to plant thirty-five trees, and they're actually fairly large trees, they're three-inch caliber trees, so.
And they'll kind of line that north side of Glen Eagles?
Yep, so originally, when they built that park, the park actually did have trees on there, but the developer failed to put irrigation for the trees to establish them, and just over the years, the Parks Department, as trees died, they just little by little removed them, and so we're actually, we've had several residents there that have asked to bring that back, so we are going to bring that little barrier between the highway and their park and their residence or their neighborhood back.
With irrigation.
With, yes, thank you. With irrigation. Yep, yeah, the, actually, the-
We don't want to just plant them.
Prior to this day, the Parks Department will actually put the line in for the irrigation and get that established, and then on this day, we'll have everything prepped for the trees, everything ready to go, so that we can just celebrate, have a good celebration that day. The staff's working on kind of the whole event, we'll, you know, have some goodies there to hand out and stuff to make a good day of it.
Exciting for that.
It's, the tree that we're planting there is a type of a linden, and they make really good eye-appealing barriers, like, it's just, they're not a really broad tree, but they do, they do kind of grow up, and they, they have a nice little yellow-green flicker to them, too, so.
All right, thanks, Starred.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Item Twelve, which is our invoices and purchase orders presented by Michelle Pitt, the city recorder.
We just have one invoice tonight. It's to LensLock for body-worn cameras for the police department, and it's for forty-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty dollars.
Okay, any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to pay the invoices.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman McCall and a second from Councilwoman Manzio. We'll take it to a vote. Councilman McCall?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gouches?
Aye.
Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye.
Thank you.
That passes five-zero. Item Thirteen is our minutes from the December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four RDA meeting, the December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four work meeting, and the December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four business meeting. Any corrections?
I just want to say I love the minutes. They, I like the new format, they're really great minutes, thank you. So, I'll make a motion to approve.
All right.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Manzio and a second from Councilman McCall. We'll take it to a vote. Councilwoman Manzio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gouches?
Aye.
Councilman Hanson?
Aye.
Councilman McCall?
Aye.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I vote aye. That passes five-zero, and we are adjourned at eight or nine PM.